Township Precipity Troy Hills, regular meeting council meeting February 12th, 2013.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open space meeting law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10th, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appear in both the daily record on December 14th, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13th, 2012, and it was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio station on December 10th, 2012. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and air on cable vision, public access channel 21, at 1:00 p.m. on Saturdays and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Council President Stanton.
Here. Also present Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglecino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancy Wazir, Miss Township Clerk. Please rise for flag salute.
Mr. Nelson, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by the nation under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming meetings: March 12th, 2013, 7:30 p.m., Agenda Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. March 19th, 2013, 7:30 p.m., Regular Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. Okay, we have mayor's presentations, proclamation to be presented to the Women's Club for their efforts to call awareness to dating violence.
24 are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple of the national average, and whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship or more likely to use drugs and alcohol are at greater risk of suicide, are much more likely to carry child with abuse in future relationships, and whereas young people victimized by a dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors and experience a disruption of normal development in self-esteem and body, and whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds, and whereas only 33 percent of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. Eighty-one percent of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know if it is one. And whereas by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented, and whereas it is essential for each community and awareness and require training for teachers, counselors, school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence, and whereas the establishment of dating violence prevention and awareness month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity, and whereas everyone has a right to a safe and healthy relationship to be free from abuse. Now therefore, I change off Barbario the mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to hereby proclaim February 2013 as Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to work toward any teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthy relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools and engaging in discussions with family members and peers for further awareness and prevention of the wide epidemic of teen dating violence. Pated February 12th, 2013. Thank you very much. Now.
I can say my name.
This is the best part.
Ladies, gentlemen. There you go, that's for you. Nice to meet you. And of course, we're gonna have to take a picture because we have all the reporters here. We don't think so, I'll move aside away.
That's a great thing.
Time magazine. I just want to say, I have a little few comments about the Women's Club. They do an outstanding job for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. All right, I can tell you firsthand, during all the storms that we had experienced in Precipity Troy Hills since 2011, all three storms, the Women's Club was there with the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in my office, and I really appreciate all that you've done and assisted the community, assisted those in need, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the presentation from ADP to the following: Precipity Library, PBA, PAL, Precipity Ambulance, and Precipity Fire Association District 6.
Okay, I got the height right. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Gordon Horahan. I'm Division Vice President and General Manager for ADP's office here in Precipity. We actually have approximately 1,300 employees in Precipity, so we're one of the largest employers in the township. We also have over 100 Precipity residents that work for ADP as well. I was here last year, and as I said then, it's very important that we give back to the community. We think it's important. I particularly want to thank the town and emergency services for the way they responded to Sandy. In the business we're in at ADP, we're in payroll and human capital management, people need to get paid, so we couldn't shut down despite the storm. We had dual generators and all that. We kept going. The town was very good about accommodating our needs and, you know, helping us to be part of the financial infrastructure of the northeast area. So I have before me some checks to present to several groups, and I'm gonna read off the groups and then I'll walk over and we'll shake hands and all that. The first, they're gonna come up, okay. First is the Precipity PBA, number 131, Precipity Police Department. Okay, next is to the Precipity Police Athletic League. Okay, the Precipity Volunteer Ambulance Squad. The Precipity Troy Hills Fire Association. Thank you very much. And finally, the Precipity Troy Hills Public Library. All of these groups will get a check for $2,000.
Thank you.
You bet.
Real quick. ADP is a very, very good neighbor to the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and are always involved in the community. I want to thank you for that and all that you've done over the years since I've been mayor for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. I also thank you for paying the taxes also on township. Thank you so very much.
You're most welcome. Thanks.
Okay, presentations, extension of the 1989 Water Service Agreement for Section 3
to Matt Kelly Business Campus. I'll turn this over to Mr. Inglecino.
Mr. Golden, you'd like to step forward? Purpose of Mr. Golden's presentation is to, I think, just give the council, the public, some general information concerning a request made by Matt Kelly to renew a water, and I believe sewer as well, just water agreement with respect to certain property that is actually in the township of Hanover but is within the water service area of Precipity Troy Hills. The project that is contemplated at that site is a Wegmans supermarket. Quite frankly, Matt Kelly has made several million dollars' worth of improvements to that property to facilitate development. We also have a representative from the Township's Water Department here so that if there are any questions regarding adequacy of water to accommodate this particular property based on its contemplated use, you can ask those questions. My office has certainly been assured that there is an abundance of water to accommodate this project and will not in any way hinder the township's water needs, and I think the request that Mr. Goldman is going to make is to have you give me the okay to enter into renew and extend the water agreement. So by that, with that background, I turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of Township Committee. My name is Tom Golden. I'm Senior Director of Planning and Development at Matt Kelly Realty Corporation. As Counselor indicated, we are here to request the Township Committee to extend an existing agreement that was entered into between Prudential and the township back in 1989 for what is known as Section 3 of the now so-called Matt Kelly Business Campus, back then the Prudential Business Campus. It's the property that's basically east of Dryden going along Sylvan as Sylvan goes from Precipity into Hanover. It includes properties, basically includes the Hyatt House, which used to be called the Summerfield Suites property, that's already there. This includes the property that we're looking to develop in Hanover, which is on Sylvan as you get to the intersection of Ridgedale. We're contemplating 170,000 square foot shopping center, which Wegmans will be the principal anchor. Agreement in 1989 provided for water service from Precipity to the properties in Hanover for a term of 25 years. That 25-year term comes up in 2014, and we're here to request the extension of that so that, as contemplated back then, that the properties as they're developed become serviced by Precipity Township Water. We would obviously pay our connection fees to Precipity. Sewer, though, is handled by Hanover Sewage Authority, okay? So it's only for water. So again, that's really the purpose of this request is to extend the agreement for 25 years. There wasn't any automatic extension in that agreement, but obviously, once the properties erupt and we're paying our bills to the township, the tenant would be happy, and we would be quite happy as well. So that is really the basis of the request. We've been in touch with Kevin Ryan throughout this process, with Mr. Inglecino, and, you know, we've tried to give the Township Committee everything that they need to make an informed decision, but we would respectfully request that you authorize us to be able to extend that agreement so we can get that project up and running.
The, one piece of information, the extension fees would be in excess of $1 million, and in addition to that, which would go to the township, in addition to that, there would be user fees, obviously, for the usage of the water that would be paid on a yearly basis.
Got a question?
Yes.
You're just looking to, you knew the lease, you're not looking to get more water?
Well, the agreement basically provided that all the property owned by Prudential in Hanover that could be developed would be serviced by Precipity Water. Fact of the matter is, over the years, the lion's share of property in Hanover is deed restricted to DEP under conservation easements, so all the green area, if you know the, all the green area around Tiffany and the area around what people call either Hart Lake or Lee Meadow, all that can't be developed, it's deed restricted. The only property you have really is Hyatt House, so that part, this parcel, and the parcel that's at Dryden Route 10, which is actually split, half in Precipity, half in Hanover, was contemplated to be serviced, but it didn't say how much water, but we provided that to.
Right, but my question is, you just want us to renew your agreement, you're not asking to get more water?
They are gonna be getting more water because of the building Wegmans on the property.
Well, we're not getting any water now because the.
Oh, okay, that was my question. I wanted the public to understand that.
The lines are actually in the street, but there's no connection to them.
Right.
I'm sorry to make that clear, sir.
Yeah, right now, the property is vacant property.
Yes.
My question's actually from Mr. Ryan. I don't know if you want to come up, sir? Thank you. Just real quick, my question is, will this in any way, shape, or form affect the restrictions we have today in the township?
Well, the restrictions we have today are conservation ordinance.
Okay.
That will not change, no matter how many properties are in place.
So one matter of fact, what's left.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any questions, any other questions?
Kevin, just so it's clear on the record, that your opinion is, is that by adding, by renewing the agreement as is being requested by Matt Kelly, will not have any adverse impact on the town's ability to supply water to its residents?
That's correct.
For its businesses, is that correct?
Correct.
And it will not add to or in any way affect the restrictions that the Council President has referred to?
No, it will not change the conservation restrictions that are in place. Now, also bear in mind, I'm telling you that there's no problems, but the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water also has to double-check my back on this.
Correct.
All right, so any allocation or any demand over 6,000 gallons per day, they're gonna look at and have to have a permit in place, so this will be double-checked by the state also.
Yeah, and what was their, I just don't recall, what was their request in terms of?
Proposed 53,000 gallons a day.
And anything over 60, you said?
Anything over 6,000 requires a permit.
So it would be subject to them getting the permit, but the township has sufficient water to accommodate their request?
Correct.
Do we ever come close in using all of our allocation of water?
Not in the past 10 years. We were required to enter into the agreement with Jersey City back in 2006.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I have a question. Mr. Golden.
Yes, sir.
I remember the agreement we had with Prudential, I was still sitting in this seat at that time, and that is a commitment that we made, and I know we have no say in the application that's gonna go before Hanover, but I have one request. I realize that your traffic improvements, you're gonna have two left-turn lanes going out onto Route 10 to encourage traffic to use 10287 to get to 80 East and not Sylvan Way.
That is correct, sir.
My question to you is, can you make sure that there is some kind of signage to encourage people to use that direction and not Sylvan Way to get to Route 80?
Absolutely. As part of our site plan application, that is a, I'm sure, request that we could include in our site plan, provide signage at the driveways, you know, indicating people to go to Route 10. That's an easy enough thing to do for us to add, yes, sir.
That would be helpful, because the Sylvan Way, Littleton Road, or 202 is heavily impacted now, and if we can get people to use the interstate highways, that'd be much better.
That was the purpose of trying to get the improvements at Route 10.
I realize that. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Council President, if it's the council's pleasure to authorize us to prepare and enter into an agreement with Matt Kelly, except that it will form, then we will do that, and then it could be on the agenda at next month's council meeting for action.
Okay.
If that's the direction you would like us to take, I think that's what Mr. Golden is here to request tonight.
Anyone against, anyone in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Tom will be in touch.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Okay, bids to be taken, February 14th, 2013, 11:00 a.m., Supply of Various Materials for the Municipal Utilities and Public Works. Ordinance is second reading, public hearing, ordinance 2013: Colon 01, Mr. DePiero.
2013, Colon 01, An Ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, Setting Township Council General Rules of Procedure. Above ordinance was published in its entirety in Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township, Precipity Troy Hills, on January 21st, 2013.
Motion by Mr. DePiero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Karifi.
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I open up this ordinance, this ordinance only to the public, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close public.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. DePiero.
Whereas above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage for said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, you'll be given three minutes to speak on this.
Capitacho 182 Hawkins Avenue. It's hard enough for our housing department to keep up with the stacking as it is. Reading this ordinance, I'm afraid it's gonna create more problems. One of them is that it seems to me like you're now running like a boarding house, you can, people can come in and out whenever they want, every two months, whatever. Also, giving the Director of Zoning and Planning an additional amount of work to do. Does this include an increase in her salary at all? Because this is an abundance of paperwork, number one. You're being asked a town council to pass this ordinance tonight, I'm asking you not to pass it. There is no need for this change, so drastic of a change in this ordinance. We no longer have single-family homes in this town. Our way of life is being changed by a few people. Now, I mean, there's still, I have a lot of discrepancies showing up here again. You're telling us to look at Table 1, I don't have a Table 1. You're telling us to look at 213, too, I'm assuming it's the 2 underneath it, not sure. What do you mean by every room in the dwelling? I mean, living rooms, bedrooms, you know, are we having people sleep in living rooms and dining rooms as long as they're cleared out? I mean, to me, that's ridiculous. There's just so much wrong with this, and this isn't the right one. I mean, you have to be more explicit on this stuff. On decay, where you're talking about that you can have, you can be there for two months. This is just one little thing, and then you look at L in the back, and it says one year. I, I'm, that's a big discrepancy. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that is still very wrong with this, and this is not helping the quality and the safety of Precipity residents. What you are doing, using your own people to have anybody come into our town, and if they want, stack up in somebody's place, that's not what this town is about. I would appreciate it if you gave this careful thought. Thank you.
Mr. Council President?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I probably should have given a little bit of an explanation of the ordinance, and just, my way to refresh some memories, and I don't recall the exact dates, but this discussion was really triggered some time ago. A young family had come to a council meeting and had appealed to the council for, actually, in the first instance, appealed to the administration and then to the council for assistance in regards to their, from their perspective, being victimized by the stacking ordinance. I was directed at that time by the council to prepare an ordinance and seek to try and address that. We prepared that ordinance, the ordinance came before the council, there was considerable discussion about it, that ordinance was pulled, and then the direction from the council was to form a working group to address the issues that were raised, and this ordinance is the result of that working group. And the working group contained a subcommittee of council members, various members of the administration, including the Director of Planning, Zoning, and Construction, as well as stakeholders from the apartment side, so that their input would be taken as well. And the changes to the ordinance, some of which are the result of this process, and some of which were changes that frankly needed to be made or should be made anyway. One was Paragraph C, which was to clarify the language from an enforcement perspective in the existing ordinance. The second section that was added in Section K establishes a limitation on guests. One of the defenses that our enforcers were encountering out in the field was that people would say, well, they were a guest, and under the existing ordinance, there was no prohibition or limitation on guests. So this provision was added, actually, to address that issue, so that there was, in fact, now a limitation on guests. That limitation did not, or does not exist in your current ordinance, and in that respect, certainly was designed to and does strengthen your ordinance by giving specific guest guidelines to your enforcement folks. In addition, there was a waiver provision that was added after much discussion for proposal that would permit a mechanism to be in place to address a situation where somebody might be perceived to be unfairly aggrieved by the ordinance in place as it is now. And there were specific guidelines established for the waivers that you can certainly read in the ordinance. Waivers are for people who would be living there on a permanent basis, not to be confused with guests. K and L apply to two different classes of people. K applies to guests, L applies to waivers, that would be for folks who live there. And there is an application process. There's an application that is designed, there's an application that has to be completed by the actual tenant or a tenant, and that application has to be signed by the landlord, because, you know, the feeling was, the thought was, after much discussion, that the landlords should be in this loop and the landlords should have to consent, and that is proposed to be in the ordinance. The application must be deemed complete. If the application is not deemed complete, there's no consideration given to the application. Once the application is deemed complete, then the Director of Planning, Zoning, and Construction will review the application, apply it to the criteria set forth in the waiver provision, which is broad, and there's a lot of discretion provided to that person to either grant or deny the waiver, and the waiver is for a term not exceeding the shorter of the remainder of the applicant's lease term, or one year.
Guest.
No, no, this applies to the waiver provision. There's no concept of a waiver with a guest. If there's a, again, the problem with the guest situation was, is that a defense to our ability to enforce your current ordinance, anti-stacking ordinance, is the defense was, people would say, well, I'm not living here, I'm just a guest. And, you know, as that created a certain level of, you know, potential, of an obstacle, frustration, et cetera, in terms of the enforcement. So rather than, you know, to ignore that, the thought was to provide a guest provision, an allotment, so that somebody could say, okay, you can have one guest who may occupy the dwelling unit continuously or intermittently for no more than two months in any 12-month period. So now, there is a mechanism to make sure that the guest doesn't become a permanent person there, so every time you go to try and enforce the ordinance, the person says they're a guest. This provision now provides the township with an enforcement tool that it currently does not have to address that problem, and it is in that way that this particular provision adds some additional teeth to the ordinance. That is not to be confused with waivers. K applies to guests, L applies to waivers, that would be for folks who live there. And there is an application process. There's an application that is designed, there's an application that has to be completed by the actual tenant or a tenant, and that application has to be signed by the landlord, because, you know, the, the feeling was, the thought was, after much discussion, that the landlords should be in this loop and the landlords should have to consent, and that is, is proposed to, to be in the ordinance. The application must be deemed complete. If the application is not deemed complete, there's no consideration given to the application. Once the application is deemed complete, then the director of planning, zoning, and construction will review the application, apply it to the criteria set forth in the waiver provision, which is broad, and there's a, a lot of discretion provided to that person to either grant or deny the waiver, and the waiver is for a term not exceeding the shorter of the remainder of the applicant's lease term, or, or one year. No, no, this applies to the waiver provision. There's no concept of a waiver with a guest. If there's a, again, the problem with the guest situation was, is that a defense to our ability to enforce your, your current ordinance, anti-stacking ordinance, the defense was, people would say, well, I'm not living here, I'm just a guest. And, you know, as that created a certain level of, you know, potential, of an obstacle, of frustration, et cetera, in terms of the enforcement. So rather than, you know, to ignore that, the thought was to provide a guest provision, an allotment, so that somebody could say, okay, you can have one guest who may occupy the dwelling unit continuously or intermittently for no more than two months in any 12-month period. So now, there is a mechanism to make sure that the guest doesn't become a permanent person there, so every time you go to try and enforce the ordinance, the person says they're a guest. This provision now provides the township with an enforcement tool that it currently does not have to address that problem, and it is in that way that this particular provision adds some additional teeth to the ordinance. That is not to be confused with waivers. Waivers do not apply to guests, they apply to folks, for example, and, and this is sort of the example that this emanates from. Everybody knows that the economy has been tough, and so the traditional, you know, American dream of marry, apartment, child, house, that progression of things, for many people, unfortunately, has been stalled and delayed and hasn't been realized. So what is happening is, somebody would have an infant, child, they would be in the apartment, and, you know, the, the thought has been, although it's a policy decision obviously to be made by the council, is that it's something perhaps a bit harsh in terms of saying to folks that you have to leave your home immediately simply because you've had a child, and that technically you are violating the township's stacking ordinance. So by giving a waiver, by granting a waiver, if, if one is granted, I'm just using that as an example, that would provide a period of time in which the family would have the ability to transition out of the apartment and make other arrangements to live without, you know, having to be thrown on the street because the family had a child. That's why the waiver is for the shorter of the duration of the lease, or one year. Now, that can be reconsidered, but the applicant would have to come back, they would have to reapply, the landlord would have to consent, and that would be reconsidered. What the criteria is really designed to do is to consider the requests against issues of health, safety, and welfare. So for example, and I don't mean this to be exclusive, but just illustrative, there is a difference from a health, safety, and welfare perspective to having a, a child who is able to drive, living in the apartment, versus one who is not. Why? Because if someone is able to drive, they're able to have a car, more cars, more parking, you're now throwing off the parking calculations for the, for the complex, that creates health, safety, and welfare issues. You certainly are not going to be inclined to grant a waiver in that instance. And as the subcommittee considered numerous examples that could arise, I think the committee decided, well, they can certainly speak for themselves, that from a policy standpoint, we wanted standards and flexibility so that appropriate decisions could be made and a balance could be made, and, and that it was clear in the ordinance what was permitted and what was not. So it's not an effort to relax stacking in any way, it is a policy directive that was not given to me by the administration, it was given to me by the council, and, and the ordinance is the result of the collaboration of the council subcommittee, as well as participation by those in the administration that would be administrating and enforcing the ordinance. So that's, with that backdrop, and it probably is not a bad idea, Mr. Council President, without infringing on Mr. Venezi's time to just run through his questions, because...
Pat, can you speak on the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, before you get into Bob's, that should have been done earlier, so we had the full explanation of it. I see what you're saying. I do see what you're saying, however, I still feel the same way. I think we are just opening up a can of worms. We can possibly get lawsuits out of this, no matter what you think, it's a possibility. And to let, leave that open is a mistake. When they get, when you go into an apartment, well, these apartments, when you go into an apartment, you go into a one-bedroom apartment, you know what a one-bedroom apartment is. Yes, I understand the thing about the child, and I have no problem with saying to somebody that comes in with a child, that if you have a problem, yeah, we'll extend you for a year. But I don't go with extending it for everybody just because, you know, hey, time's tight. Times are tight for everybody, and what happens there does affect these people on the outside, you're using more wood, you're using this, you're using this, and it does raise our prices too, eventually. As I said, I do understand, however, you had a subcommittee, and once again, no residents were involved. You had the apartment people there, but no residents to give any input. I would have liked to have seen some residents on that subcommittee. Thank you.
It was a, it was a working committee, it wasn't... It's a sub, it was a working committee, though. One of the other examples, if I could expand upon Mr. Inglisino's explanation, was in, in the case of, let's say, a, a young couple again, that have dead twins. Now they're in a one-bedroom apartment, they had twins, our ordinance calls for them to move out. Well, they want to move to a two-bedroom apartment, but none are available in that facility, so in this case, the landlord could, could sign this waiver and pass it on and say, when a two-bedroom apartment becomes available, this couple will be relocated to the two-bedroom apartment. Until it is, I'd rather not evict them, let them stay here until we get a two-bedroom apartment. These are some humane things that come up, and, and the waiver process allows us to, to take care of things like this, whereas our original ordinance did not.
We never, we never did that before.
Okay, Pat, I have to cut.
You're changing an entire thing that was never done before. And that's the thought, and that's what you need to think about.
I, I think we've made it more humane and more reasonable, and, and there is, there is oversight on this, it's not, it's, these waivers are not granted to everybody. The, the original couple that made this an issue with the four-year-old child, okay, the landlord would never have signed the waiver for them if, even if this was in place, because that particular couple, the husband was repairing cars in the parking lot as a side business. The landlord wanted him out anyway, so that waiver, in that case, would not have been signed, and, and would, would not have come before our board, anyway.
And this isn't an open-door policy. It has to get through the landlord first, then it has to go through the town.
There's no mention of landlord's liability in there at all.
Well, the, the landlord is liable under your, under your existing ordinance for, for enforcing this particular policy, which is frankly why they were at the table, and is frankly why the landlord consent, we've, I certainly felt, and I think the, the working group felt, was appropriate, and I think the case study that Councilman DiPiero just gave fully illustrates why that would have been an important thing to do, because the allegation made by the landlord in that particular case was that there was actually an illegal business being operated by this particular tenant at the location. So if, if the landlord, we would have no way of knowing that necessarily, but the landlord certainly knew it. So by the landlord refusing to sign the application, it wouldn't go forward. You know, the risk of the lawsuits, you know, go both ways as well, and, and so I just want to make that point, but, and the point here is not to, in any way, encourage stacking, I don't think that's a, a fair reading of the ordinance. There is certainly no rights given to anybody. This is a, a waiver, this is a waiver process in which the municipality, together with the landlord, will have a tool to deal with situations such as the one we use for illustrative purposes of the couple who, congratulations, they have a child, now they're evicted from their apartment and they have no place to go. This provides a mechanism for that to occur without in any way providing any rights or power or leverage to those who would seek to, to stack. And that's, I think that if, if that is the policy objective, if that is the policy objective that the council seek to achieve, then my legal opinion is, is that this ordinance achieves that objective. But if the policy objective of the council is that, you know, no, the law needs to be completely absolute, there should be no waivers, we don't care if, if, if somebody, you know, gets pregnant and has a child, and they should be thrown out no matter what, if that's the policy directive of the council, then obviously this ordinance, as prepared, would not achieve that policy objective. So that's, I don't, I defer to you, Mr. Council President, as to when you would like me to answer Mr. Venezi's questions, to not impose on his time, and Mr. Venezi, I want to say that I did not mean to put you off the last time that you were here, it's just that, you know, from a procedural standpoint, the last meeting was simply an agenda meeting to set the agenda for this meeting. The appropriate place for discussion on the ordinance is at the public hearing phase, and so that is why I sought to defer, you know, my response to your questions, because this is the appropriate time to answer questions and have discussions, because there are members of the public who would show up to the public hearing thinking rightfully so, that they would be hearing what, you know, everyone wants to say about the ordinance, and if the public hearing was held, or a portion of it was held at another meeting, the public would be deprived of that opportunity, and under the law, they, they should have that opportunity to hear all the discussion at the public hearing portion of the process. So that's why, primarily why I deferred answering your questions until tonight. With regard to your questions, one was, when a waiver expires after one year, what section of the ordinance prohibits the same lessee from reapplying and thereby extending the same waiver for another year and perhaps continuing this process indefinitely? Well, the answer is a couple of things. Number one, again, the waiver is for the shorter of the duration of the term on the lease, or one year. So it's not just a one-year waiver. The waiver can be granted for any period of time up to the remainder of the lease, or for one year. The waiver, if there's, say, nine months left on a waiver, and the circumstances would lead the director to say, well, maybe they, they get two months, then that's all they would get. So it's not just a one year, but it's no longer than the remainder term of the lease, or one year. There is nothing that would prohibit the lessee from reapplying, they would not be extending the waiver, they could reapply for a new waiver, which would mean that they would have to, once their current waiver were to expire, they would have to reapply. There would be another application, that application would have to be signed off on the landlord, the application would have to be the complete, deemed complete, and they would have to submit their reasons for requesting the waiver, and all of those reasons and requests would be considered anew by the director. There is no mechanism to simply extend the waiver, they would have to reapply for another one, and that application would be considered on its merits. With respect to your second question is, in the case where more than one person's name appears on the lease, let's suppose that lessee A applies for and is granted a waiver, when that waiver expires, what section of the ordinance prohibits a different lessee from applying for the same waiver, thus extending the original waiver by another year? The ordinance actually addresses that question in section K, four, paragraph five. It addresses the situation in which there are multiple tenants named on the lease, and the waiver would be, again, applicable to the tenant who is requesting the waiver. There is no way to just say, you know, the waiver's expired as to tenant A, and therefore it's somehow bestowed on, on tenant B. Each waiver is very specific, it is specific to that tenant, it is specific to the application that is submitted, and the waiver ends when, when the waiver ends pursuant to the approval, if it's so granted, and that's it. There's no extension, there would be another application and application process required for another waiver. Third question was, the waiver application must be signed by the applicant's landlord. Is the person or corporation that owns the apartment considered the landlord, or can a building superintendent or apartment manager sign off? The answer is, that's up to the landlord. You know, there's a finite number of landlords, our folks in the administration, end of things, know who those landlords are, there has been and will be communication. If landlord says that superintendent, you know, Joe Jones, has authority to sign the waiver on my behalf, then the municipality would recognize the signature of Joe Jones, which is fictitious, fictitious name, of course, to sign on the landlord's behalf. The point is, is that the landlord or the landlord's agent, somebody who we know is authorized to bind the landlord, must sign the application on behalf of the landlord, and we would work with the landlords to figure out how the landlords wanted to implement that. But they would not be left in the dark. Your fourth question is, what section of the ordinance prohibits a lessee who has already been cited by the Division of Housing for an occupancy violation from delaying prosecution or circumventing entirely by applying for a waiver? And, and the answer is, you know, there is none, but if there is a violation that is pending against a particular occupant or unit, that information would certainly be available to the director and would undoubtedly be used as one of the factors in the director determining whether to grant the waiver or not. That said, if the ordinance is approved, in the infancy of the implementation of the ordinance, I would expect that there may be, just because we're at the very beginning of things, some people who apply that may be in technical noncompliance with the existing ordinance, just because of a changeover in, in permitting this procedure, and, you know, that doesn't mean those folks wouldn't be in violation of the ordinance, it means that that fact would be taken into consideration by the director in making a determination as to whether or not to grant the ordinance. Certainly, that information would be available to the director, and certainly it would be, it would be considered as a factor, and I would expect in many cases, it might be a, it might be a knockout blow. Your last question is, how many waivers do you expect to be issued in the average year? How do you propose to monitor the waiver process to make sure that the number of waivers granted does not far exceed the number anticipated? I'm probably not the right person to answer that question, but I'll relay to you what I heard from representatives of the working group, the one, one of whom was not here tonight, and what I heard was, is that there will be requests, there, there won't be multitude, we do not expect multitudes of requests, we do not expect, you know, a lot of requests, but we do expect that there will be some requests. So we do not anticipate, you know, that there's going to be a windfall of, you know, hundreds of people requesting waivers. Of course, you don't know that until, until you're out there with it, but again, those waiver requests in the first instance will be filtered by the landlords, because if people are submitting applications to the municipality that aren't signed by the landlords, they're not even going to be considered. And I think that the landlords, based on the input that we received, are going to be very, you know, judicious about, you know, the, the waiver request forms that they are going to sign. So we do not expect a multitude of waiver requests, but we do expect or anticipate that in instances of the type that were described before, again, that being the young family, the married couple who has the child, and now they're in strictly a noncompliance, we do anticipate it and expect that there will be a few of those. And again, the purpose of the ordinance there is to provide folks, folks like that, an opportunity to transition in an orderly way, in a lawful way, from their current apartment into more appropriate housing. That won't last forever, because those waivers are reviewed when they're up, and so that's, I hope that addresses your questions.
My name is Bob Venezi, I live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive, thank you for your detailed answers, and the, the, just the, the one question about the landlord, to me, that one made a difference to me, because a true landlord isn't going to sign a waiver very often. A superintendent, that's a different story, he might, he might just sign it, especially if a person coming to him says, well, you know, you might be taken care of by Santa Claus.
We'll, we'll make sure that if the super signs, that, that we know that they have authorization from the landlord to sign on their behalf.
All right. Under the existing occupancy law, the birth of a new child can cause an occupancy law violation, which could result in the eviction of an entire family. Most people would agree that this is an undesirable effect of the current law that should be remedied. The waiver provision of ordinance 213, 201302 provides a mechanism that would offer relief in this situation, but in my opinion, it would also jeopardize the prosecution of hundreds of occupancy law violations that should be prosecuted. According to the Division of Housing, during the 12-month period from August 2011 to August 2012, 172 violations of the occupancy law involving rental properties were prosecuted. That department only has the resources to inspect half of the rental units in the township in any given year. If they did have the capability of inspecting all of the units annually, that 172 number would likely be much larger. Once people figure out how to use the provisions of this proposed ordinance to their advantage, it will become much more difficult for the Division of Housing to enforce the law. Currently, an overcrowding condition can be prosecuted as soon as it is detected. Under this ordinance, that may no longer be possible. The first delaying tactic to be used will be to declare that the person causing the overcrowding condition is a guest, and we already know that that happens. That'll postpone the enforcement process for two months. Then after that period is over, the next step is to apply for a waiver. I expect, in the future, that every occupancy law violator will, will apply for a waiver. What have they got to lose? Even if the waiver is denied, they've still... Even if the waiver is denied, they've still managed to delay prosecution for, you know, like another 60 days. Most of the occupancy law exceptions that you desire can be accommodated by a very simple change that I, that I first heard right here in this chamber. All you have to do is include a clause that exempts natural-born or adopted children under the age of two years old from being considered occupants. That ensures that a newborn child cannot cause an occupancy violation for two years, and it eliminates all of the loopholes associated with the waiver process. As evidenced by the 172 overcrowding violations that were prosecuted last year and the hundreds of instances that go undetected, stacking does exist in Parsippany. Don't make it any more difficult to eliminate by passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Venezia, if I may, the resolution to the issue that you propose is illegal. It's illegal under the Federal Fair Housing Act. It's illegal. It would be thrown out in court in two minutes. I would strongly advise the council not do that. They do that, they'd be passing, in my opinion, an illegal law. You cannot, you know, exempt people on the basis of age in that way. First of all, you would be discriminating against people with special needs and whole other classes of people, and the law specifically provides that you can't draw that line on the basis of age. And as I have counseled, from a legal perspective, the council in the past, it is imperative, imperative that all of the waivers be linked to health, safety, and welfare. If your waiver provisions are not directly linked to health, safety, and welfare, they will fail in court as being illegal and unconstitutional. Secondly, the ordinance, of course, will not be enforced the way in which you described. There is no delay. If you have a waiver, you're in compliance. If you don't have a waiver, you're not. If you're violating the ordinance and you don't have a waiver, you will be prosecuted. It's not an excuse to be able to say, oh, I'm applying for a waiver, or thinking of applying for a waiver. The ordinance is very clear-cut. If you're, whether you're in violation or not, is not open to debate or question. You're either in violation or you're not. You either have the waiver or you don't. So the ordinance would not be enforced in the manner in which you described.
I believe during the meetings we had, because we actually looked into the age of the two-year-old, and it was actually changed during the time that we were meeting, that it was actually taken out.
That's correct.
If I may, in regards to this ordinance, I wasn't involved in every meeting, but it's clear to me that this ordinance actually strengthens, strengthens the stacking laws that the council members worked on. There was no provision for guests. Now there is. Prior to it, guests could stay as long as they wanted. Now they cannot. So I don't know how this would weaken it. Only thing that it does, in my opinion, and the council members that were there, strengthens it.
Roy?
Roy Mesmer, 10 Drummond Drive. As Yogi Berra says, deja vu all over again. Seven months ago, we were here talking about this ordinance, and at the time, Jonathan wasn't sitting up here, but Jimmy Vigilante was, and the ordinance was voted down unanimously. I've compared the July ordinance, which was 2012-31, to today's 02. There really isn't much of a difference. Couple of words have been taken out. The one to two years have been taken out. There was no change. It's a very confusing ordinance. It's been clarified a little bit tonight. I only wish I had as much time as Mr. Anglosino had, because I would be able to explain, because nobody's been involved.
Thirty seconds.
That's why I had 30 seconds? Oh. I talk pretty fast. I would be able to go through, because what, what we're lacking here is that there's got to be honesty from the landlords, property managers, whatever. I can't believe that none of them are here tonight to talk about this ordinance. Whether they agree with it, they don't like it, were they involved in the subcommittee? I don't know. I mean, I wish I was invited to that subcommittee. Housing Department, Pat and Bob did an excellent job tonight in their points. How are they going to do it? Seven years, five years ago, I showed you these pictures of these apartments, Meadowbrook. I brought in $35,000, $45,000 into this town, because of their fines. They couldn't look at a building from the outside? How are they going to take care of all this stuff? Remember, gentlemen, your campaign pledge, the stacking ordinance, strongly enforce occupancy ordinances. I showed you this seven months ago. Now, I have one example. Roy Mesmer moves into town with his wife, and I have a 10-year-old kid, and I only can afford a one-bedroom apartment. I've run into hard times. We're going to give a waiver for that?
If I gave you my honest opinion, absolutely not.
We're not going to give a waiver?
Landlord wouldn't even let them in.
I'm sorry?
Landlord wouldn't even let, landlord wouldn't even let them in.
Jamie, you and I both know very well, there's a lot of stacking going on in this town right now in these apartments. So why would they stop it now? That's why I would love to have seen some of the landlords. They don't have that landlord association anymore? I mean, the Plaxton used to be president of? They do? No. Like I said, I, I just can't believe that none of the landlord property owners are here tonight.
I do have to tell you, from the meetings, they were in favor. They were in favor of the waivers.
How many of them were there? They were invited, or they read this ordinance?
Yes, they were invited.
How many?
We had two there.
Two of them?
Yes.
From different apartment complexes?
Yeah.
Yes.
I still wish you'd vote this down. You did seven months ago.
Well, the only other, the one sort of major difference between this ordinance and the previous one is the landlord's consent, and that was not in the, the previous ordinance. I believe that was in the previous ordinance that was going to, I don't think it was, because that was something that came out.
What was that?
The landlord's consent.
No, I don't think it was.
No, we, we've never had the waivers where it went through.
We didn't have a waiver process.
Never. This is all brand-new, Roy.
He's talking about the one he introduced. You're not talking about the actual ordinance. You're talking about the one that was introduced before this one.
Yeah.
That's what he's talking about. So I don't know.
Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'd like to close public on this thing. Entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. DiPiero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferraro. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ferraro, continue, please.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading, that a notice of the final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Ferraro. Second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Let me first start, start off by saying that I was not part of the subcommittee. I thought, I was under the impression that the ordinance was going to contain something in it that would hold the landlords liable for relocation fees if somebody was evicted out of their apartment. Were we going to try?
That's state, that's state, that's state law.
Okay.
That's state law. So that's, that's included in there as a matter of state law in which the municipality actually has to front it and then recruit it, but that mechanism is provided by state law.
Okay. Secondly, I have to agree with Mr. Venezia, Ms. Patacia, in far as the waivers, and the reason for that is, I'm not, I do not have a problem. I would not want to see somebody that just had a newborn child evicted out of their apartment. But obviously, people know when they're pregnant. So if you have a current lease, at least maybe, okay, if you want to grant a waiver for somebody, have them show something from the landlord saying that immediately they are being put on a list for a two-bedroom apartment, right then and there, and that would show as proof for their waiver process, for that only. As far as the two-month waiver process for somebody, who's to say, somebody comes in and says, listen, my cousin has nowhere to go. I need to take him in. If we grant a waiver for that, every person now that comes in with that type of excuse has to get that waiver, because you give it to one person, you have to give it to the next person, which is going to just continue and continue and continue, and it's going to increase the stacking. I don't think that this strengthens the ordinance at all, and therefore, I vote no.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Before I vote, I would have to be careful in what I say. I believe that the person who's, excuse me, the housing coordinator, I believe the person who holds that job must uphold the law, clearly, but I also believe that the housing coordinator, whoever that may be, ultimately needs to use his or her good judgment. I just feel that this ordinance is being created for the benefit of one employee, and I'm just, I feel very uncomfortable voting on it. I abstain.
Mr. Stanton.
I think the problem with this, I think people are looking at this as a free-for-all waiver process, and I admit, Jennifer Collins is going to have her hands full in the beginning, because those that are in violation right now, their landlords might even tell them, hey, for the past few months, you know, you had a child, whatever, let's do it the right way. But I don't look at this as the free-for-all waiver system. I think this actually strengthens our occupancy laws. I vote yes.
Final vote tally is three yes, one no, and one abstain. Motion passes.
Okay. Ordinance 2013:03, Mr. Karifi.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2012:23 entitled, an ordinance establishing white-collar salary ranges for the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on January 24, 1st, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi. Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
And before I vote, I just have a question to the administration. I know the purpose of this ordinance, but does this apply, this salary range apply to all white collar or just the one we were concerned about?
No, it's just the chief financial officer.
Just the one position?
Yes.
Because it doesn't say that in the title anyplace.
It does in the, in the body of the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. I vote yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, open this ordinance up to the public, and only this ordinance. Entertain a motion.
Second. I might make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Nelson.
Excuse me.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferraro. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Papatachi 182, how much, just want to know how much was the maximum before this?
One forty, oh, before this?
It was 125.
125. How come such a big jump?
Because when we interviewed candidates last year for, to replace the CFO, we found that the salaries out there for CFOs was much higher than what we pay our CFO, and we were, we really were having a hard time finding someone at that salary who was experienced enough to handle a town the size of Parsippany and to be able to follow in the steps of some really great CFOs that we've been lucky enough to have.
Our, our CFO's salary, if you remember, we used to have a treasurer and what was Griffith, financial?
Finance officer.
Finance officer.
Director of finance.
Yeah, we had a finance officer.
Income controller.
Yeah.
Income controller.
We had two different positions, and when Bob Griffith retired, we combined the two functions to save money. But I guess at that point in time, we, we didn't fairly compensate her, and so now we went out and got to hire someone else. All the applicants were making far more than what we were offering as our top salary. And so she's been underpaid for a lot of years.
I don't know. She had a car. This one's not getting a car, right?
Well, that was part, you're right, and that was part of the compensation, no. Part of the compensation to her at that time was she would have a car.
That's right. That was part of it, yes. So if we get a new chief financial officer, there's no car involved here?
Any new hires don't get vehicles.
Okay. Still a lot of money. Thank you.
Exactly. Well, the ordinance read, there's exemptions to that, though.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public on this ordinance. Motion by Mr. Karifi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Karifi.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi. Second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinance 2013:04, Mr. Nelson.
An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing a license agreement between the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills and Parsippany Soccer Club Incorporated. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on January 21, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Nelson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferraro. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion, open this up to the public, and only this ordinance. Motion by Mr. DiPiero. Second by Mr. Karifi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will open this ordinance, this ordinance only to the public. Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public on this ordinance.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr., oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Michael Spail, 80 Brooklawn Drive. At last week's meeting, we spoke about the percentage of the number of players on the soccer team that are actually from Parsippany, not from Parsippany, and we determined that the team that won the national championship, basically two out of 10, or four out of the 19, were from Parsippany, yet they're using our fields and such without paying for them. I was asked by Mr. Karifi if I could get a little bit more information. I actually tried to get that info regarding what fields and when they're used by a team like that, that's 20% resident, and I filed an Oprah request, and the response was basically that the soccer club has a open, or a blanket permit, so they get the fields essentially when they want, where they want them, and then they, in turn, determine who uses those fields, and they don't have to provide any of that information to the town or the rec department. So basically, there's no way to get that information, which to me doesn't seem right considering the fact that the people who use those fields are the travel teams who are primarily, from what we discovered, not residents. When the kids who live here, the kids whose parents are paying the taxes, the kids who are going to our schools, they're not the ones playing on the turf fields. Instead, it's the people that pay, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 a season to play on these academy teams with the professional coaches that are using our good fields. And I think, I'd like to disagree, or not necessarily disagree, but at the last meeting, Mr. Barbaria Ramirez said that he thought the rec committee should look into this, and I completely disagree with that, because as we learned, for one thing, during the Field of Dreams, Mr. Anglosino had said that the committees are basically advisory. They don't really set the policy. It's just purely advisory, and that what they determine really has no weight in determining what the council votes for. And I really look at this as a fiscal responsibility of the town. We're, we are actually paying to maintain these fields. It's not like the Little League or something like that, where you do give them a lease, where they rent it for, you know, a dollar or something like that for the season. In that case, they're responsible for everything. They pay for all the maintenance. They pay for everything. Where, what's happening here is, we have these teams that, you know, four out of 19 live in Parsippany, and they get the fields, and the people who live in Parsippany can't use the fields because they're on them. People who maybe aren't in Parsippany but want to rent the fields and would pay and bring revenue to the town can't use them because they're on them, and I think that the town is losing a lot of money financially, and I think that the kids who live here and are in the regular soccer club, who, who do live here, are themselves being deprived from using fields that their parents are working to pay for, and I think, you guys, you know, I'd really appreciate if you do something to change this. Thank you.
This had nothing to do with this ordinance.
No, no, I was thinking the same thing. Before we comment on this, we're going to hold this off, the comments for the five-minute public session, because it really has nothing to do with what the ordinance is.
That's fine. Very good.
So we got... So, we got everything you said. We'll just bring it up later during the public. And you'll get two more minutes, not five. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public on this ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferrar. Okay, Mr. Nelson.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Now therefore be it resolved that this said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Before I vote, and I don't know if Jasmine or the administration will be able to answer me. When this property was purchased, and I understand that it was purchased under previous administration, what was the intent to be, what was the intent to be used with this property? Do you have any idea?
Well, I think it was purchased with Green Acres money, correct? It was purchased with Green Acres money, so.
No, I understand it was purchased with Green Acres money, but it was.
All the space that we purchased was either, was for open space and recreation.
I guess my question is, was, was it the intent to build a park there? Was it an intent just to leave the house?
Well, I mean, the legal answer to that is, is that regardless of what stated intent may have been, if the money, if it was Green Acres money that was used to purchase the property, then that in and of itself dictates what the township can do with the fields. And irrespective of what the intent was at the time, once Green Acres money is accepted and used, then that in and of itself dictates what the potential is for the property over time.
Okay. I vote yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, open this up to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ferrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. You'll be given five minutes. If you don't mind, I'd like to start with Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dave Ferguson, 4 Biscay Drive. I'm also the current president of the Parsippany Soccer Club. I'd like to just address to the council to clarify some things for it. So first of all, thank you very much for your support and for passing the ordinance. We will hopefully be able to now hold our monthly meetings in a different location. We're sort of moving this, for those of you, this is to move from our existing clubhouse location that's next to Smith Field into another property onto Smith Road. So we currently has that. We have roughly between 1,600 and 1,700 kids that participated in the program during 2012. To respond to Mr., I believe it's Espejo, to say that we did not pay or that those non-residents did not pay to use those fields. Over, for the course of 2012, we've actually remitted a non-resident participation to the township, fee to the township of $100 per child, as per the ordinance. Last year, that fee totaled, I believe, $23,200. So out of the nearly 1,700 kids, roughly 230 of them. Relative to the claims about the non-kid, non-Parsippany field, non-Parsippany residents utilizing the fields, I'd just like to discuss what we're doing as an organization and how we've promoted things here in the fall, where the largest percentage of our recreation, if you'll call it, program works. We segregate time both on Saturdays and during the weeknight, four games, four practices for both sides of our club. We don't differentiate between recreation, travel. We are one organization as a whole. We integrate. The goal from us is to promote the game of soccer within the township of Parsippany. We hope that kids will start with our recreation program and as their skill levels progress, they'll move on to the travel. In some instances, as the teams get older, they actually excel, their skills excel through hard work. And they're able to win things like a Super Y League national champion that our U-17 team did achieve this year. There were several children from Parsippany on that team. And the argument that I'll make and to anyone is that we want to be able to provide for these children. We wanna be able to provide for Parsippany residents to play within Parsippany. Two of the, two of the members that are on that team, Mr. Wong and Mr. Viscachil, they wanted to be here tonight, but Mr. Viscachil was actually being awarded at the high school event tonight. I believe he was first-team all county. Mr. Wong has received a scholarship to Marist University, at least a partial scholarship for, I believe he's committed at this point for playing in the fall. All because we were able to field the team through their hard work, through coaching, and to excel and be identified at events like a national championship. We exist for that purpose. As the kids get older in ages, the problem with youth athletics, and it's across the board, whether it's football, baseball, soccer, or every other one, as the kids get older, their interests vary. We wanna keep the kids together as a team. For, from our perspective, at times, if we want any Parsippany kids to not have to leave town to play on a team, yes. We will bring in kids and we'll offer that, but based on the ordinance, we pay what's required. We paid the $100 per, per, per non-resident participant during 2012. So to say that these kids don't, don't pay their share of the field time, I don't believe that that's accurate. That list is submitted, again, on an annual basis to the township.
The U-17 team, how many games they play?
How many games did they play?
Just a regular season, maybe playoffs, a guest in there?
Twenty, roughly. Twenty-two.
Ten home, ten away, or it's just?
Roughly, yeah. That's probably about right.
And how many players are on the team?
I believe there was 18. It might have been 19. I'm not familiar with all of the rosters on all of the different teams. So, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm very well. How are you?
Correct me if I'm wrong. I did some research on my own. Out of the 100% of the team, according to our ordinance, 80% have to be Parsippany residents.
Out of the club?
Out of the club.
I believe that's, that's correct.
Twenty percent.
Correct.
But if you want, you can make a team of 17, 19 kids and they could all be out-of-towners. As long as you stay within the 20%, is my point. Is that correct?
As, as I believe the ordinance is written, as long as the, the membership of the club of any youth sports organization is in excess of 80%, then it, it's one of the recognized youth sports organizations.
Basically, what I'm trying to do is answer Mr., I'm sorry, I might mispronounce your, Espejo. The answer is, you are correct in what you're saying. But they are within their, I guess, right to do 85% for that team and 15% Parsippany, as long as they stay in that 20%. I mean, now if we catch them out of that 20%, then I guess we have a, an argument. But I just wanted to answer that. I don't know if you understood that.
We'll let you come back up right after. Another thing I wanted to bring up, too. You have 18 players on a team, four from the town, 14 are out of town. You play 10 games. I mean, the revenue for the town's $1,400, which I have to say is well over what the permit cost would have been for the field.
Right.
So they are paying for themselves and then some. You could come up with a question in case I'm.
The only follow-up I have with this is when, when, when the Recreation Advisory Committee and the soccer club came back and asked us to change it to 80% for the whole club and not just 80% each team, which is what the original ordinance said. I was still envisioning that the majority of the kids would be from Parsippany. And that's not turning out to be the case. And I'm disturbed by that because I, I would rather see, I would rather not be training other kids that are gonna be playing in the high schools against our kids and beating our kids because we've developed the talent for these out-of-town kids that are playing against our school. I would much rather see more of our kids playing, whether they make the championship or not. My ultimate goal is not to produce championship teams. My, my ultimate goal is to see our kids be trained and developed to the best of their ability, period. If that's not championship level, so be it. They're learning sportsmanship, they're learning team play, they're learning a lot of things. And, and we're, I think we're shortchanging some of our kids that would not be championship teams but would be a lot better if they could play on these travel teams rather than get out-of-towners. Now, my question to you is this. I don't wanna go keep drafting ordinances to try to tie your hands. What can we do, either as, as a council or what can you do as a club to get more of our kids to participate on the travel teams? Even if you don't produce all championship teams.
So, so Mr. DePiero, I don't believe that the two are mutually exclusive. As an organization, we strive, we go to great lengths to place every, specifically every Parsippany resident that tries out for a travel team on a travel team. There are very few exceptions when that's not possible. And we go to extensive lengths to, to try to, and in some occasions, that's when we do bring in other out-of-town residents is to form a team that will enable Parsippany kids to, residents to participate in. So the, the.
Let me, let me point out. You tell me if this perspective is incorrect, because this is the perspective I've gotten. These travel teams have professional coaches that are paid. And they're, and to them, their win-loss record is very, very important to them. And if they don't see the talent here in Parsippany, they're gonna reach out to someone they know that's out of town, that brings in that ability, they want to produce a winning team. These coaches are doing this, not your club.
Well, that, that's not the case, Mr. DePiero. And I'd like to.
That's what I keep hearing.
So can I, I'd like to clarify a couple of points to it. So on, from all of our members of our club, from our Division seven kids during our clinic also have professional trainers that run those sessions as well, both on intramural, as part of our intramural program. For our Division six, five, four programs, which are truly the grammar school and middle school age kids, when they're at their most, at their, at their peak for their ripe for development, when they're sponges and they're able to really pick things up on our, on our intramural program. We also offer them as a function of registration for the club, professional training on a basis during the week. The travel teams certainly because they're paying, and again, from our, 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 our club registration for in-town this year has been $85 for participation. That includes the uniform, that includes insurance for the club, that includes this training for Division six, five, four, and three kids. On some of the, on the travel teams, certainly they pay for more, but they're also, the monies that they're paying, the families are fronting for it, are paying specifically for that, that travel as well. So the club does offer that program to both our recreation, our intramural side, and to our travel side. So again, our goal is to, to, to have them develop at, while they're younger, continue to develop their skills in the intramural program, and hopefully blossom into players that they can progress on the travel side. The other thing I'd like to clarify just is that unlike most other sports in the United States, for identification, for scholarships, for our kids in Parsippany to play in college is generally done through travel soccer rather than high school soccer. If there, we have several college coaches that are affiliated with our organization that I'd be happy to have discuss with you offline if you'd like that, that can substantiate that. That Division one and Division three coaches, they really go to the travel tournaments to look and identify players and award them for college scholarships rather than going through high school play. It's unlike any other sport that's in the United States, at least at this point that I'm aware of.
Just to make a comment, this is the same in all sports. The last thing you want is to have the four Parsippany kids actually playing down at a level that's actually no good for them, too. I mean, I'm gonna compare this. I'm gonna use Paul as a reference. Let's put Justin Creefy, who's probably 305 in his last 10 years of wrestling, back in rec league, we're a lower division. Doesn't help the person. My son's involved in soccer. And I have to tell you, it's not good for first year, whatever, for a kid to go out there and score 50 goals. You have to separate them. And you're doing an injustice by actually pushing people down. If you keep that and you say they all have to be Parsippany residents.
No, I wasn't.
No, 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 I know. I'm just saying in general.
I wasn't saying they all. I'm just saying that it needs to be tempered.
Okay. But you can actually hurt the team more than.
And again, Mr. DePiero, we go to great lengths and the, the other portion to it is that the final, final decision on all, based on our, our, our bylaws, the final decision on all roster selections is done through our Board of Directors, through, through our Vice President of Leagues, who is a volunteer, who is a Parsippany resident, is not one of those coaches. So all of those rosters ultimately are reviewed, not only through our Director of Coaching, but through our Board of Directors, through our VP of Leagues.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
You have, you said you have about 230 out-of-town.
That's correct.
Players out of the 1,600, 1,700. And they are on, now you have, how many travel teams are these all-star teams do we have?
Well, unfortunately, we wish we had more on travel teams you're talking about or national championship caliber teams.
Well, these types of teams that are gonna be primarily out-of-town residents.
So I believe that right now at the, I, I could give you, I, I don't have that data off the top of my head on what the roster selection is for the older kids, especially because this, the, the general time that the older, the more out-of-town residents are at the older age groups and they don't really start playing until the springtime. They go high school season, they finish the high school season, then come on.
So would we be saying it could be five, 10 of these teams?
I would say no more, yeah, no more than that.
No more than 10. Okay, now. Are they also on a regular team and they in addition play on this travel team?
No, they'll, they'll.
Oh, so they're strictly on the travel team?
Not at the same time.
No, we do not, we do not allow as an organization within the club someone to play both in, on the intramural program and on the travel program.
So it's one or the other?
Either or, correct.
Okay.
Just because it wouldn't, again, it wouldn't be fair to the kids that are involved in our intramural program.
Now, when you say there's 20, 22 games, is that a regular season?
That's correct.
Okay. So now are there additional games for playoffs, et cetera, that are played? Where the season could now stretch out to 25, 30?
So, so in ours, the way, and I'll give you an example for the Super Y League team that went through this. They'll play a certain set of games in their Y League or, or NPL League, whatever they're playing. And then at the end of that season, generally what will happen is they'll be invited to a tournament. So this particular team, they won based on the Mid-Atlantic region. And then they traveled to Tampa, Florida offline and played the games at, at the site in Tampa.
There's no additional games on our fields?
No. The only, the only one that would be is that in some of the teams are involved in a state cup competition. But all of our teams, regardless of the level, are eligible to participate in state cup competition if they're age U-11 and up.
But again, primarily, most of these out-of-town residents are on these travel teams. They're not on our regular.
We, we have a, our participation of out-of-town residents on both our intramural and our travel program. We have a great.
But where would you say, I mean, based on this one team, it was four out of 19 are from Parsippany?
Yes. I would, I would say the majority, there are more out of, non-residents that participate in the travel program than in the recreation program or the intramural program.
Right. Because they're, they're gonna try to recruit the best players, so they're gonna reach out for all over.
I'm gonna have to cut this down.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I'm just trying to answer the question.
Yeah, last, just last counsel and last question. I, I know that they said that it was the Recreation Advisory Committee that had the ordinance changed.
Recommended.
Well, recommended, recommended. What, what was the recommendation other than to change it? What were the reasonings behind it?
I, I was, I attended the, my, we have term limits as president and for our club. And I was, I attended the Recreation Advisory Committee when the ordinance was discussed only as an observer, and I do not recall the specifics. I, I don't believe that it was, I don't believe that the soccer club was the one that, perhaps Mayor Barbaria, you can remember. Mr. Low, yeah, Mr. Low was our president at the time.
Come up next then, or we're after.
Yeah, very good. So Mr. Low was the member of the Recreation Advisory Committee at the time he would have a better recollection. Any other questions I can answer?
You don't have to, you can go sit down, thank you, because your time is up and we don't wanna.
Thank you.
But I just wanna make a comment. I, I just wanna say, it shows something for the soccer club if people out of town wanna come and play in Parsippany. Ultimately, it's the parent that choose to pay for the trainers because maybe their kids are gonna get a scholarship somewhere. So other than that, I mean, I don't, I'm not in favor that they bring out of the, you know, whatever the paper says, 80, 20. But, I mean, we don't force anybody, I guess, to come here and play soccer if they don't want to or pay the money for the trainer.
I would say I think there, okay, Michael Espejo, 80 Brookline Drive. I wish the question you would have asked him wasn't how many games you play, but how many practices do you have a week on the fields? Because that's where the money is. Because, first of all, if it wasn't a financial interest and if it didn't benefit them financially, the way. the way it is now versus the way it was, the 80/20 rule, it was changed for that because it began to cost money, so it was changed. If it wasn't a financial issue, they never would have gone through the trouble of changing it in the first place. And I don't disagree with soccer being a great sport, I just think that it's getting kind of out of hand in our town, and it's sort of like, where does it stop? Because on the one hand, they're saying they do everything they do, can to get Parsippany players on the teams. We have two high schools here, right? Both have soccer teams, various ages. I bet they can make a Parsippany team if they want to, but as mentioned, the goal is to win. So, they get, you know, people from Paramus, all over the place, to come play here. And it, and it, where does it get to a point, you know, in the professional sports, right? Not even every state has a pro team. You've got levels that go up higher and higher and higher. At what point does it stop? You know, okay, we've got one great player from Parsippany, there's a new league, we can go higher. Okay, let's recruit in. On the website, you know, like I said, it's, you know, to get on the team, one of these teams, you submit to a committee to get a tryout from a committee. And I think that this all came about, you know, originally with the Field of Dreams, with this whole quote-unquote shortage of fields in Parsippany, when we have pretty large amount of fields. And I think this is why, is because they basically have free rein to do anything. And yeah, they pay $100 per player, but the field's $80 to rent with lights. So, that $100 gets eaten up pretty quickly. And I think you need to really look at the actual percentages of the players on the teams, the numbers, look at the records, what, the ordinance prior to this one, what was it like? What was the revenue? What was happening then? And see what happened after that. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll go.
TJ Ritter, 72, Brookline. Mr. Mayor, my sausage came out pretty good, by the way. Should have stuck on.
I didn't want to test it, because I didn't want to be the guinea pig.
No, I'm still alive, so. What happened was, a couple of weeks ago, I put in a permit to try to get one of the fields for my rugby team. I'm 36 years old, still playing rugby, much to the chagrin of my mother. And it turns out, like, the soccer club, you know, takes up, you know, a good portion of the time for the field, which I have no issue with whatsoever. I called the coach of the Ironbound Soccer Team, that was the guys that they beat in these finals or whatnot, just to see, like, hey, is it, is it just Parsippany, where there's only four guys from the team from Parsippany, out of like 19 people? And the gentleman from the Ironbound Club said, no, that's, that's typical for us. You know, what happens is, you have these younger kids up to a certain age, you know, it's going to be 100% Parsippany residents, like six, seven years old, 100% Parsippany. And the older they get, you know, they're going to recruit from out of town, which is, is the norm. What's not the norm, though, is us subsidizing them by them not paying for the usage of the field. Yes, we bring in $100 per out-of-town resident, which I think is $23,000 or so, something they were saying along those lines. But if we would actually charge them the permitting fees for use of those fields, because the fields that are being used, Smith, Janarone, veterans, are being used primarily by out-of-town residents. The dork engineer that I am, I ran the numbers and stuff, and we're losing anywhere between $200,000 to $400,000 a year in permitting fees. And that's not even including lights, maintenance, or any of that stuff. I'll have to, I don't know if I can open it or I can ask somebody, but to figure out what our kilowatt hour usage is for the lights there and stuff like that, because us as taxpayers, we're paying for that. So, if I'm driving by, like, Smith Field or something on a night and the lights are on, it's typically, if it's soccer being played, it's typically non-residents playing there, they're paying there for free, they're not paying to use the lights, I'm, you know, we're subsidizing them. So, that's it. Have a good night.
I just had a comment, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
No, no. I just wanted to point out, we do that for everybody. We do that for football.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, but those are primarily residents, so, yeah.
But we do that for everybody. I just want to make it fair.
I understand, I understand that.
Just because you go by Smith Field and you see soccer guys, we do that for everybody. I just want to make that clear for everybody.
I understand. It's just primarily soccer team or non-residents, that's, that's the issue.
Mr. Ritter, was that, were you answering me what my question, to my question?
Why the ordinance was changed to the 80/20 as opposed to it used to being, I believe
it was 90% of the total organization?
Yeah, the rumor on the street was that there was the 80/20 rule, and then the soccer club started getting invoiced because their teams weren't 80/20. And through, you know, like, making sausage government work, they, they swapped it from the team to the, the club as a, as a whole, as opposed to each individual team. Because the soccer club itself, I'm sure, is probably 85, 90% Parsippany residents, but it's when you get to those older kids that are using the turf fields, that are using the lights, those are the people that benefit from it. So, maybe you should have put that field in my backyard, my rugby team could have played there.
Hi, David Low, 16 Maplewood Drive. I'm the ex-president of Parsippany Soccer Club, also was in the role of VP of Leagues, responsible for the travel program. So, just to kind of clarify your question in terms of why we changed the ordinance, the genesis of that change really came about from an administrative perspective. So, soccer club, 1,600 kids, permits every night, every field, trying to get individual permits for every night, really just became an administrative nightmare, right? From a club perspective, to the point where we would actually have to go off and pay somebody, right, to work with the rec department, just to generate permits. Hey, I've got this team on this field at this time, print a specific permit, post that permit in a box, just didn't have the volunteer hours to do it. So, we came up with the rec committee, a, a solution that said, hey, right, let's look at this. We originally had a fee of $75 per out-of-town resident. When we made the change, we actually agreed to raise that fee to $100 willingly, just to allow us to find a simple way for a volunteer organization to manage the process. I don't know the numbers exactly, but I believe the club's actually paying more in permit fees today than we did prior. The comment was made before about practice time, things like that. At the end of the day, we practiced three, four teams on a field at once, right? So, you may have, and if you look at the out-of-town residents, it's really in those older age groups. So, the team that won the national championship is really the oldest age group we have in the club. More kids drop out every year, you move along, hence your percentage of resident versus non-resident is the lowest at that high-end age group. In terms of overall field time, in the fall, those high school teams don't play, right? So, the only teams on the fields in the fall are what we call U-14, eighth grade and under, both travel and intramural, right? High school, those older high school teams are playing on their high school leagues, right? They train, as Dave said, they kind of come on in the spring, will play typically seasons that run from March, you know, into, into June or July, right? So, there's a big discrepancy in terms of, when you look at a, at a travel team, an elite travel team, versus a regular, what we call a club travel team. I've got three kids who all play, I've got two who kind of play at a, a high level, and one who plays club soccer, right? Now, I think the beauty of our club is, we offer multiple levels for every kid who wants to play, right? Dave's done a great job in putting in new programs. We're actually going to have spring intramural this year for the first time in the club in probably 15 years, right? We put in a Division II high school program for kids who didn't want to play travel, didn't want the pressure of travel, but liked to play, and didn't make their high school team, right? We put in a Division II program, and I think Mayor, you know, Dan Knowlton, right, helped kick that off, we've had that now in the club, you know, for five years. So, all I would say is, you know, we are one club, run by volunteers, a lot of the time and effort is put in by kids who have kids in travel, like myself, right? They all grew up in the intramural program, four-year-olds, right? I now have a 16-year-old. And hours and hours worth of work, and really what we want to find is, I don't want to have to take my kids out of Parsippany to go play somewhere else, right? And unfortunately, as they progress from a talent level and those kids drop off, you almost have no other choice, right? If you don't bring in, you know, a non-resident, there is no team, right? So, unfortunately, in soccer, you have to have 11 on the field, right? And if you can't field, you know, really 15 to 16 players, you don't have a team. And so, again, working with the rec committee, coming up with the non-resident fee, I think everybody across all the organizations, sporting organizations, thought it was a, a reasonable mix. So, that's how we got here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Next.
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Hey, if I talk sports, can I stand up here all night? Come on, guys. Okay. My question here is, the fields that the soccer team uses, were they purchased with Green Acres money? I've heard that, I've heard it said. Now, with Green Acres money, it has to be open to everybody.
It is, it has to be.
But how can it be open to everybody if you were...
We can't, we give our residents the first choice when it, when it comes to certain times, but at nighttime, when you, like, you see the individuals playing, like Mr. Ritter said, those are adult leagues and out-of-town.
Well, we've got things covered here.
Green Acres says it has to be open to everybody, but you don't have to charge the same.
Right.
You can charge more for out-of-towners than you do for in-towners.
I understand that, but to me, when you're giving permits out to say, here, you get the usage of this land, you know, whether you're out-of-towners, if you're out-of-towners, yeah, you can have the use of this land for four hours out of this day. But meanwhile, maybe some Parsippany kids want to go over there and play themselves, rugby or something. I'm just saying, you know?
In, in those instances, if, well, first off, I knew that, I would have, I would have gave preference to a Parsippany resident to use those fields. But in essence, if the field's open...
It seems like the soccer club really has those fields down for years now.
Who?
The soccer.
Well, the adult, the adult league is different from the soccer club.
It just sounds like they have total...
They're not part of the soccer club. And Pat, I could, I get very frustrated when it comes to the nighttime games as well. I would rather see Parsippany residents on it, but they never, I guess there's not an adult soccer league in Parsippany that wants to use it. These games, they go on 11 o'clock at night.
Oh, I know.
I'm sure you've seen it before.
I've seen them. Don't know what those idiots are doing out there.
By the way, Pat, I'll talk to you later about your road.
Jim Castagna, 34, North Beverick. About a year ago, I sent the whole council a letter, and I would really like to give it to you again, if you don't mind.
Sir, just pass them all, pass them down. Thank you.
It was about a year ago, and it has to do with the property. I am a taxpayer, a property owner at 34 North Beverick. I've been there for 26 years, never had any problems. Now I have a major problem with the operator of the Spartan gas station, who's on the corner of Lakeshore and, and North Beverick. The, the primary problem is that he has a cyclone-fenced pen abutting the north wall of my property. And it's padlocked in the front, it's padlocked in the back, I have no access whatsoever to my property. I cannot clear the snow, I can't clear the debris. In addition, he's bringing back junked cars with his wreckers, and every once in a while, I'm in my back office and my building shakes. Because, for whatever reason, the car is being shifted off the wrecker and it hits my building. Now, that's a cinder block building, those cinder blocks are hollow. So, as a result of this, the prop, my property's being destroyed and defaced. And I'm really appealing to you folks to help me. I have never, ever had a problem. I have seen 20, I have seen, without exaggeration, five or six tenants of that property over this time. We've all been very friendly, neighborly. I can't say I got a neighbor. Additionally, no less than six giant flatbed wreckers. Three of them are always about 12 inches away from my property. And I researched this. There's a, there's a state law, and I don't want to be a pain in the neck, I don't want to call the cops, I don't want to call the state police. There's an idling law. I come in, my, my store stinks. That property on that corner, it was not meant, in my opinion, and I don't think in any reasonable person's opinion, to house six giant wreckers. It's a, it's a lousy two-pump, two-pump gas station. It's, it's a danger. Talk about health, safety, and welfare, you've got one serious problem there on the corner. Now, I have called the various authorities in the town of Parsippany, they've all been very, very nice, they've all come over, they looked. Yes, it was tidied up, I will say this, a while back, it was tidied up, but it did not help me one bit. I've got a 60-foot length, the north wall of my property, I can't paint it, I can't remove snow, I've got seepage, I've got trees growing down into the roots, that long. I've got a serious problem. When that pen was constructed, I was told that someone from the town, and I know this is neither here nor there at this late date, said, well, you know what, you got to move that back at least two to three feet, because there's supposed to be a catwalk there. Never done. That's really all I'm looking for, so that I could get to my property and maintain it properly. I mean, I'm sure we're all residents of this town, you wouldn't want to be, you wouldn't want to see your property being destroyed day after day, week after week, without the ability to remedy the situation.
Mr. Castagna, the fence that runs along your building, is that on, on his property or yours?
That, that building, as far as I know, was built a long, long time ago, and I know when I closed on it, there's, there's an easement there, okay? So, yes, to answer your question, it could be, but it, you know, those things happen when they were carving up things, like, you, you, you take this piece and I'll take that piece, Joe. I don't, it might be.
The fence might be on his property, okay.
It might be. But I have no access to my property. And the problem is, you know, if, if, if the guy had a grocery store there, there wouldn't be a, it's, there's big, big metal and tires and all kinds of junk laying against my property. I can't paint it, I can't fix it, I can't mortar it, I can't do anything.
I'll take care of it from...
The mayor says he'll send somebody over.
I'll send someone over, and also, I'll give you a call tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Well, Mr. Castagna, if I, if I might too, I just, because your, your troubles fall into two separate buckets of, of issues. One regards compliance with township codes, regulations, ordinance, et cetera. Those issues are appropriately addressed to the administration, and the administration will address those issues. There are other issues that you have raised, which concern private disputes between property owners, trespass, nuisance, et cetera. Just so you understand, those types of issues are not issues that the town government can address. Those are issues that you need to address with your neighbor, either amicably or, or through the courts, or however you legally decide to do that. But I just don't want you to have an expectation that the town government has any ability to adjudicate disputes between private property owners. I just want you to understand that that's not an area that the township can involve itself in. However, the township can and should involve itself into code compliance issues, ordinance compliance issues, things of that nature. And the, the kinds of troubles that you've described really fall into, to do two different buckets of issues, and I just want to make sure that your expectations are correctly set.
I understand that, and I'm glad you, you know, I do understand that, but I would like to know, because I've never, 26 years, I've never seen minimum six gigantic wreckers on that property. I've never seen a junkyard pen in the back on that property, never. This all transpired over the past, what, maybe three years? Boom, it's there. And it has created the problem. Now, is he within, is that, is that, are they within their rights to have that kind of a mess going on there? I mean, you know, but North Beverick Road is a great little strip, it's great.
Mr. Castanza?
It's just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. We're going to make comments, you could have a seat.
Sure.
But you can't talk anymore.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just had one question.
Oh, go ahead.
I just, I did, sir?
Mr. Castanza? I'm sorry.
I just had one question for you. I was reading, I was reading the letter as you were speaking. You, you mentioned that you did speak in the past to, to various township officials. Do you know what departments you've spoken to?
The building, the building and zoning, a couple of people, you know?
And what did they, what did they tell you?
And I called back, and they came, everybody was very nice.[1778.76] And I called back, and they came, everybody was very nice. I'm not here, you know? Very, very nice. And then I called back and I said, you know, I still got this problem. Oh, oh, that, the one person said, "Oh, that was kicked upstairs, I don't know what's going on." You know, I'm a, I'm a busy guy, I don't like to be chasing this down. I have, I run a business, I run a couple of businesses.
Sir, I'm sorry. When you say it was kicked upstairs, what are you talking about? With this letter or years, how many years ago?
No, this was before the letter was written, okay? Because I have been trying to straighten this mess out.
I don't see an upstairs.
I don't know if you see an upstairs either, but I've been trying to straighten this out for quite some time.
I guess that meant the mayor's office, but it was never kicked up to me.
I don't know. I don't know what that means.
I mean, the only thing upstairs is to my office.
I'm not trying to be funny.
No, no, I understand.
Well, I'm gonna kick it back down.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy Massman, 10 Drummond Drive. Back to my old self, Brian, I've got about six items here. First thing, first thing, now, what, the soccer club is gonna start renting the house on the sheep farm. What are we gonna do with the house that's next to the Powell Building? Rugby club or somebody else interested in it?
It's going to be demolished for parking, additional parking at Smithfield and the
Tonight, Jonathan brought up something that, I'm kind of leading into this though too. The sheep farm, I remember it was about 10 years ago, we purchased a sheep farm when Mayor Letts' administration. Nothing was said at that time, and I had asked the question, what are we gonna do with the property? We can just keep it passive so we don't have water runoff?
You've asked, you've asked that several times.
Yeah, right, nothing was up, I was the one to make sure that the sheep, the, there you got, lean-tos were taken down, because that was our property and I remember that, and the next day they were taken down. But last summer, and I'm gonna get to what Jonathan said before, last summer I brought up about that house, possibly renting it to not, just to Derek McDonald or to another serviceman that's back, that's in hard times. Then all of a sudden, the soccer club shows up, and now they're renting the house. And the house, that property's been there for 10 years.
I bet that property was bought with Green Acres money, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you can't, you can't...
First of all, there's nobody renting it, it's a license agreement.
Yeah.
It's not a rental.
I thought they were paying money.
But under Green Acres, you know, recreation, soccer falls under recreation, and that's legitimate for them to utilize it.
Well, the ordinance said tonight, I'm sorry, Mike, they're, they're paying, right? They're renting it?
Yes, but it's a license agreement.
No, they're not renting, they're not renting it, it's a license agreement. You can't rent the house out with a lease. They're paying, but they're paying for a license.
They're paying a license fee.
I know, it's, okay. Some, right, a subterfuge or whatever you want to, okay, wait, yeah, same thing. But my, my, the point I want to get to, because Jonathan brought up about what was the intention, I know he's looking down at this administration, and they weren't the administrators at the time, and it leads into it tonight too, because buying Anita Baldwin's house, let's face it, after all closing costs, everything else, attorney fees, it was well over $70,000. What is the intention of our administration of this council? To, you know, what are we gonna use that property for? We purchase these pieces of properties, and then they sit there, nothing is ever said, nothing is ever done until, you know, years later, where somebody like myself comes up here and says something. Next, easy point, I see that the gentleman's here tonight from the power company, so I don't know if he's gonna be speaking again tonight or not, or you've asked him to come in, Brian. Jamie, I'm just throwing this out because last night I was running up at the Hills High School, the tennis courts, you know, you saw my memo, we should start charging, but I weren't, the nets are up, the snow's on top of them. Those nets are not cheap, we've got six, six, yeah, six nets up there. I mean, there should be a timeframe, and I realize we could have an Indian summer, I love seeing people play tennis or whatever, but those nets should come down in a certain part of, you know, December 1st or something. Okay, back to the last thing here, tonight, regarding the ordinance tonight and other stuff. We have a major problem in this town, and Jamie, I'd, I'd, I'd love you to call me tomorrow or sometime this week, and we could get together with one of my neighbors. These boarding houses that are popping up all over in this town. Now, this ordinance tonight doesn't address those. That comes under other, what do you call it, federal housing law, whatever, and well where, the court case over in Hanover, where a bunch of different families were living in one house, and the town tried to take them to court, and the judge ruled in their favor. You can have all these families living in this house. Jamie, I don't think you were at my town meeting that night when that woman did come in, but you didn't come to the second one that, when you were there. She's afraid to send her 10-year-old daughter up to the mailbox. This house next to her, it's right on the corner of Tarn and Moraine, you might even knocked on the door the other night, Vinnie, they advertise on Craigslist, and there's a number of them. I can tell you between Sedgfield and Glacier, and I know a lot of the other neighborhoods too, we have an unbelievable amount of boarding houses. People can't sell their house, and instead of, you know, News Economic Times, they're renting these homes out to a bunch of people. And I, I don't know how we can start working on that, set up another subcommittee and start talking about it, what inspections we can do. My last thing tonight, I'm almost probably up. Regarding inspections of the apartments, and you guys, and everybody in this room pretty knows I'm well versed in this, but it's still a little confusing. We can only go in and inspect these apartments once every two years? Is that right?
Yes.
So, I, I, and, and it has come out, and I know there's people have videos, they know when they're being inspected, and those mattresses are leaving the place, okay? I mean, something's gotta happen here, and it's gotta start on the grassroots, because this town, one-third of our living units are apartments. Last thing regarding this, I'd love to see this town council work with the Board of Ed, I realize we can't get names, but how many kids are coming out of these different apartment complexes? That's something that we are, I'm gonna be staying on top of that, thank you.
Just real quick, in January, I said, "We're gonna be starting a housing committee." It's gonna be around April then, and we also talked about starting the Economic Advisory Committee in April too. So, we will be starting. As for talking with the Board of Ed about the students, and we tried before and we were denied.
Yeah, Roy.
What was the first committee, Mr. Councilman?
Economic Advisory, and we're gonna start a housing committee with Jennifer Collins.
Roy, you brought up...
Roy, you're on the housing committee. Yeah. I want your letter in my mailbox this week.
Roy, you brought up a good, a good point, and I forgot to ask the administration. What, what is, do you have any, any plan of what to do with the Baldwin House, any ideas of...
We're going to, it's gonna be in meeting rooms, it's gonna be historical, we're going to do events there, and possibly trying to find out, we might be able to use the garage to house the ambulance there. Right now, the ambulance don't have a place...
The paid EMT.
Yeah, to, to even house the ambulance, which means they run constantly, wear and tear, so that's what we're looking at to do with the building, and more as time goes on.
Okay, but I would hate to see it sitting there.
Well, it's not gonna sit there, there's, there's plans for it.
Okay.
Okay, see no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public. Motion by Mr. Krefi. Second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, before we go forward, I just wanted to ask Mr. Iglesino something. There's someone in the audience, they brought up something, and since Roy brought up about boarding houses, we have an address, and I wanted to actually look into seeing, like, I guess who purchased the house, I guess because it's being paid, the rent's being paid by the state, and from what I'm hearing, it's like four or five individuals in and out. So, basically a boarding house paid by the state of New Jersey. Can we look into this?
Well, we, we can look into it, but municipalities in the state of New Jersey are very essentially powerless to, you can't exclude so-called boarding houses that are, many of these are run by nonprofits, and they serve an underserved segment of the population in a variety of different ways, and those are permitted uses. You can't zone those out, you can't determine that those people can't live in a residential zone. Now, if there's overcrowding, if there are those kinds of issues, again, health, safety, welfare, code violations, that sort of thing, those are appropriate to look into, but you can't just, you know, say that whether it's a boarding house for cerebral palsy, you know, folks who live there or something of that nature, you can't legally exclude those uses from residential zones. It's illegal, you can't do it.
Any laws about notifying the town, so they can just overnight, okay, so as they purchase, they're gonna be...
Yeah, I mean, you know, you can't do that. This is not the body to petition for that relief from, you'd have to petition to the state legislature and I suspect to the courts, because that's, that's the place to go. And that's not unique to Parsippany, that's every municipality in the state of New Jersey.
I could be speaking out of term, I think the council president was asking, do we have the right to know who's living there, if the state owns the house? Not that we want to throw them out or anything, we're just saying...
No, there isn't any special notification that's, that's required, I mean, they have to, if they're gonna make improvements, if there's something that triggers their legal requirement for them to go to a board, I mean, typically, you know, boarding houses, we'll take cerebral palsy, for example, who I know, you know, buys houses, typically, when they buy a house, there are certain improvements that have to be made in order to accommodate their residence, and that would necessitate them to come before a board in order to get, you know, some sort of a site plan approval to equip the house to appropriately house the folks that would be living there.
Do they, do they pay tax?
The owner of the house does.
The owner of the house, yeah, they typically pay tax. If it's owned by the nonprofit, I don't think so, but I'd have to check.
We have several ordinances that are on our agenda tonight, that, for the Rose House and New Bridge Services, there's several of them on here. What kind of tenants are those gonna bring in?
Well, tenants of those nonprofits, and again, those ordinance are really, you know, the state, again, that really has to do also with affordable housing, because you have monies in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund that if you didn't have a plan on how to utilize those funds by July, whenever it was last year when you passed the ordinance, you would risk losing that money. It was actually now Assemblywoman Betty Lou DeCroche, when she was at the DCA, came up with a program whereby municipalities could work with the New Jersey Mortgage and Housing Finance Agency to deposit Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies with the HMFA, so that they would utilize the money in concert with, you know, developers who would work with nonprofits to acquire homes and to use for purposes that would get you Affordable Housing credits. And that way, you could ensure that affordable housing money collected from Parsippany for Parsippany would be used in Parsippany.
I remember the use it or lose it.
Use it or lose it, and it also will give you credits, valuable credits, towards your affordable housing obligation, which right now admittedly is in flux because there's a petty case before the New Jersey State Supreme Court, but clearly your round two obligation is going to, is not going away, and clearly there will be some sort of obligation going forward, although that is undefined at the moment. But the last thing you wanted to do, and I think the council made that determination on the basis of advice from not only myself, but also your planners, the council wanted to do was protect Affordable Housing Trust Fund money that was collected in Parsippany and make sure that that money wasn't gonna be used for some other municipality to satisfy its obligation, you wanted it to use it to satisfy your obligation here. And that's, that's what the money's used for. So, as the money is used for the purposes set forth in the resolutions or ordinance, I can't recall, which you're gonna be getting valuable Affordable Housing credits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by township council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item be removed from consent agenda, considered its normal sequence on the agenda.
Mr. Council President, I'd just like to make a quick motion to, to remove Resolution 2, 2013-36, recognizing the 150th anniversary of the Emancipation Proclamation, not because I don't believe that there should be a, a resolution, it's just because we're not, we don't have the resolution in front of us yet. So, I'd just like to make a motion to table that until next month.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, just to be advised to the public that we had an individual come here, he was actually supposed to come out front and actually read it today, and we've had no contact whatsoever since that meeting. Okay, roll call on the consent agenda.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Right now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the agenda meeting of 10:09 2012 and a closed session at 10:16 2012.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
I abstain on both.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, ordinance 2013, colon, zero, five, Mr. DePiero.
An ordinance of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills County, of Morris, State of New Jersey, to amend and supplement Chapter 290 entitled Parks, Recreation Areas and Public Lands, Article 1 of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. It is resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on February 12, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 19, 2013, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. It further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second. Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, ordinance 2013, colon, zero, seven, Mr. Krefi.
Ordinance 2013, colon, zero, seven, an ordinance amending Section 285-4, Schedule A, No Parking Fire Zones of Article 1, Chapter 285, Parking of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, to establish fire zones and regulate parking at 1479 Route 46, Block 726, Lot 6. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on February 12, 2013, and said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 19, 2013, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second. Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, ordinance 2013, colon, zero, seven, Mr. Krefi.
Ordinance 2013, colon, zero, seven, an ordinance amending Section 285-4, Schedule A, No Parking Fire Zones of Article 1, Chapter 285, Parking of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, to establish fire zones and regulate parking at 1479 Route 46, Block 726, Lot 6. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on February 12, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 19, 2013, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
from the Township Affordable Housing Trust Fund for use by Advancing Opportunities Incorporated and New Bridge Services Inc. at 66 North Bevworth Road under the NJDCA-NJDHS Special Needs Housing Partnership Program.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero. Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I have concerns about the property being right on Bevworth Road. Is there any way the administration can give assurances that this issue has been addressed?
What issue?
That, that, that because it's on a busy street, that that's been taken into consideration, that it won't be a problem for the residents living here.
No, the administration can't give that assurance, and there is a nonprofit that is responsible for that, and they've decided to choose that problem.
Jonathan, for your information, we do have a Cheshire home on North Bevworth Road, which is a home for handicapped. Six residents are living there right now, and they've been there for about 15 years with no problem.
Okay, that's all I want.
Let me just say that I did talk, reach out to Bob Parker from New Bridge, and the New Bridge is going to be developing the property, but the operator of the property is actually going to be Advanced Up, Advancing Opportunities, which used to be United Cerebral Palsy. They've been operating group homes for over 50 years, and they, they participated in the selection of this site. They're, the, this is a group home that's going to have 24, 24/7 supervision. The other thing is that the, any vehicles don't have to back onto North Bevworth Road because the back of the building allows for a turnaround.
That was actually one of my second questions. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-059, Mr. Nelson.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsoni Troy Hills, awarding a contract for onsite wellness coaching services.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. DePiero. Discussion?
Jasmine, you sent an email earlier to us about workman's comp cases have gone down significantly in the last year.
Yes.
Would you attribute it to the wellness coaching services?
I would attribute it largely to that. There are, you know, the other thing I would attribute it to is 2012 was actually a very mild winter for us, both at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. We do tend to get trip and falls as a result of icy conditions, you know, employees walking in the parking lot, snow shoveling, we get some, you know, back injuries. But I think the wellness program has been hugely successful.
Okay, are, are the township employees taking, making good use out of it?
Yes.
Is it high enrollment?
In fact, if I can, very good use out of it. And I will tell you this, Councilman Nelson, I, since it's been implemented, it is such a positive outlook, even on the workers that come. We do, we do special events of walking. We did a pedometer walk, and individuals from sanitation were really, very impressive. They got in better shape, you know, blood pressures went down. And I have to tell you, I attribute that to the way it's been handled, and I think some of the, you know, some of the cost-driven factors have been reduced because that we've done this program.
I can give you some stats that we got after the program had been in operation for 18 months. We had six employees who quit smoking, 14 employees who reduced tobacco use, 60 employees who increased their weekly exercise, 80 employees lost 1,300 pounds, and 105 employees improved their blood pressure, and of that, 51 lowered their blood pressure below 140 over 90. And, you know, those are, excuse me, those are, those are very significant numbers. I mean, you know, one stroke, one heart attack, you know, one tobacco sensation, those are huge savings for us, not only on the workers' comp side, on the sick day use side, and also on our medical premiums, particularly now that we're self-insured.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-060, Mr. Nelson.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsoni Troy Hills, authorizing an agreement with Alpha Dog Solutions for maintenance of the township's website.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Ferrar. Discussion?
Discussion, please. I have nothing against Alpha Dog Solutions. I do believe that we're grossly overpaying for what, for what we're getting, for the product that we're receiving. The website, to me, is a little too cluttered. Actually, it's way too cluttered. It's very difficult for, for the residents to navigate, and I really do feel that we would be much better off, for the time being, not renewing this contract and by going month to month until we can decide where we want to go forward with this, with this website. I'd be more than happy to, to give specific reasons of why I'm unhappy with the website, but I feel very strongly that a town of this size should have a website that's much more professional and becoming a parsoni.
I'd like to.
Councilman, okay, I have to respond to Councilman Nelson, if I may. Funny you say that, because I've gotten a lot of accolades on the website, a lot of residents calling up saying this is a very good website, it's very informational, and that I haven't, I don't think I've gotten one negative comment on the website since it's been implemented. The other one was antiquated, nothing compared to this one here.
This website is going to cost us about $22,000 a year, is that correct?
Twenty, was it 21?
Approximately 20.
Twenty-one.
Okay.
Twenty-one.
I reached out to the former, the Roman Media Group that actually designed that, the original website, and I was informed by them, correct me if I was wrong, that it was going to cost us about $3,000 to $4,000 a year to maintain that website at the time. So to me, that comes out to $18,000, $19,000 cheaper. So why are we going with, when we had a business here in Parsoni that was operating the website for us very well, I do believe, in my opinion, and now we're going to another group here that's charging us $18,000, $19,000 a year more when we can save that money?
When, when, after Tom Roman developed the website, we really, it really was turned over to the township and we administered it in-house, and he, he updated as we requested updates, but the daily updates were done in-house, and.
The content?
Yes. What, what we found was that it became very stagnant. You can go to the, you could go to the website over a two-week period, and nothing would have changed. We also found that there were too many postings that should long have been removed. I think the website that we have now is a much more dynamic website. We have postings probably daily, sometimes many times a day. Paula has some stats, actually, on, on some of the hits on the website, and there, the usage and the visitors to our website has increased tremendously over.
Now, those updates that are daily, that's done by Alpha Dog?
Yes.
Okay. Were those updates ever requested to be done on that consistent basis with the prior group?
The prior group was in-house, I mean.
Okay, so, right, okay, but the, the Roman Media Group, I contacted representatives from that group today, and they told me that they would be able to do what Alpha Dog is charging us $22,000 for, they'd be able to do for $3,000 to $4,000 a year, which, to me, is a big difference, a very big difference.
That's not what they were doing for us when they were, when they were involved with the township.
Can we maybe table this and look to get another group in here to possibly bid on that or save us money?
Can I make a suggestion? This is coming to us 12th hour to make a change. Why don't we go with this, and then we have a committee to look for next year, and then make sure you're comparing apples with apples?
Councilman, you're, that's a very fair point, in the.
I have no, I have no objection to changing, but, but let's make sure that what you're comparing is what the services we're getting now, the first service we would get.
It's not apples to apples. If I could just respond to you, sure, that's fine, but if, I mean, why not address it now where we can save that money this year? We're going to let another whole year go on where maybe we can find that out in the next month or so and save the town $15,000, $17,000.
I can tell you this, it's not apples to apples. This is one-of-a-kind license. Roman Media, Roman Media doesn't even have this license, but we can discuss it. I have no issue with discussing it.
What I'm suggesting is, in the Alpha Dog contract, it says that at the expiration of the contract, if we don't renew, we'll go month to month at the same terms. All I'm requesting is that we go month to month for the time being until we can make a decision and talk it, and talk this out.
Well, let me just make a point, because Councilman Krefi brought up a point about him going out and talking to vendors. Under this form of government.
I know.
Counsel is not permitted, and I want to make sure people understand that. Counsel is not permitted to negotiate contracts or to go out and solicit contracts in any way, shape, or form.
I was not stating the counsel.
If you're going to, if you're going to try to create a mechanism whereby you're going to evaluate prospective vendors, that has to be worked on and done through the, through the administration. It can certainly be done in cooperation and conjunction with some sort of oversight subcommittee of the council, but it is not appropriate for folks to go out and, and sort of, you know, solicit that kind of, you know, to solicit contracts.
I was in no shape or form saying the council, I was saying the administration.
Okay.
To do that.
You spoke to Roman Media, not I.
What I, what I.
Just to get information, to do research, which I feel the taxpayers of this town deserve.
Okay.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I don't see any harm in, in holding off on signing a one-year contract until, until the administration could be better informed, how about that? For the time being, we would still be, nothing would change with Alpha Dog, we would still be paying the same, same amount, and it would be the same contract, except that we wouldn't be tied into a 12-month contract.
This is a one-year contract.
Yes, it is, it's a one-year contract.
On what?
There's no change. This is a one-year contract that we're going forward with, so there is no change. It's the initial.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
No.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
No.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Okay, roll call is three yes, two no, motion passes.
However, it passes, but I have no problem with.
Same thing.
Forming the subcommittee and planning for the future.
But we just, we just signed a one-year contract.
Okay.
All I was asking is that we go month to month until.
You just asked for a one-year contract two seconds ago.
No, I thought.
No, we did not.
Yes, you did.
Not.
Excuse me, Mr. Tannen.
Not for no, no audience, not for nothing, your last statement you made.
Mr. Nelson?
Was sign a one-year contract, and then we look in, your last statement you made was not month to month, it was we do a one-year contract and we look into.
Yeah, but.
Which was what I said, what's on there now.
Which was written, which was, which was on there now.
But you just verbally said that before the vote.
But I thought that was the only thing that was on there to vote on. We had a vote, no, we had a vote against us to, to go month to month.
But you asked for it, two seconds. Okay, let's go forward.
But I would still like the dialogue to take place with Roman and compare and see what, because we made a, this, this council and this mayor made a big commitment for open publications and getting everything out on that internet, and this is happening now.
Jasmine.
And, and we have to see if Roman can do all of these same things and what the prices for to do all of this. So I have no problem with comparing.
I agree.
And preparing for next year and not wait until next year's contract is in front of us again.
That's what I was, I was hoping, just to table this and go month to month for the time being, but.
I don't know how somebody could get the right quotes unless they know what Alpha Dog does. I mean, I'd like to know, so maybe we can get a list of everything it does.
We'll get you information.
I know, I've seen him at different function. I mean, I've seen people, so for somebody to say I could do that maybe from their house or come into the function. So let's do that.
Just form a subcommittee and include some of the council members on this subcommittee that have this interest.
Well, I think if I can just.
That sounds good to me.
I just wanted to let you know exactly what is happening. You know, the purpose of a website is really the face of who we are in our community. This is going forward, very important, how we communicate with our residents, and I think it's important to explain that in 2011, during that snowstorm, our website got 1,000 hits, 2,000 hits, 3,000 hits. This year, for Hurricane Sandy, our website got 65,000 hits, and that duration or that peak frequency that people were visiting our website was from October 29th, or I believe that was the date of the storm, all the way through, and it started to drop somewhere around November 9th. One of the things that the township is working on is it's, it's important, because like I said, the website is the face of our municipality, and going forward, social media is very important. I've been speaking with Mike Melham, the owner of Alpha Dog, in terms of cooperating feeders for Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, and other social media that will help you be better informed and also save mailing costs. I mean, years ago, the township used to send monthly mailings, but we also want to do electronic newsletters as well. So this is something that I'm working, the administration's working on with Alpha Dog that's going to be in addition to what you see in that contract, that no additional charge.
You know, Paul, you know, we spoke briefly earlier about it. You know, with, with a municipal, with any government website, off the top of my head, there are three things that are important. It's the functionability, the accessibility for people to get information, and, and the aesthetic of how, how it looks, the branding of the town, and then, and then, and last is the cost. And all four, actually, all four of those factors need to be taken into consideration. I think the township can do better, and, and that's what, that's what I was hoping for, not to throw Alpha Dog out, out the door right now, because it's, it's very time-consuming and costly, migrating from one, one place to another, but to go month to month and not lock ourselves in while we can have this discussion. That's, that's, that's it.
Okay, or 2013-061, Mr. Nelson.
Resolution of the Township of Parsoni Troy Hills Township Council authorizing the engagement of an online energy agent consultant for a government agents, government energy aggregation program.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrar. Discussion?
Yeah. Can we call the gentleman up again? Is that, is that proper to, to ask him to come up, just answer a few more questions?
Can you please come up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just mention your name again.
I'm sorry, I, your name slips me.
Yeah, sure, it's Robert Shilton with Gable Associates.
Okay. Mr. Shilton, I touched on this last week, and I saw your memo in response to it. I, I understand where you're coming from and what your business does, but I just have real issues forcing something down the resident's neck. I understand that it's, it's legal, and, and the BPU says it's proper, but there's just that, that little thing in the back of my head says that there's something wrong about telling people that we're going to change it because it's good for you, and that it would be putting the burden on them to opt out. I really do wish that it would be the other way around. I do understand that, that the amount of people who would be opting in would be obviously much less, but, you know, I, I give the residents the benefit of the doubt, thinking that if, if they feel that this is a, a good program for them, that they will opt in, and, and I really urge you to reconsider just that one aspect of the program.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and, you know, I've given it some thought too, since our conversation last week, and really, the program can only, it's either sort of do it that way, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but the way the rules are set up, it's opt-out or it really can't be done, it's just the way the rules are set up. But I also wanted to kind of maybe, I, you know, thought about our conversation last week, and I wanted to maybe, I talked a little bit about how the utilities go out and get their power, that they sell to customers, and maybe to kind of give a bigger picture where essentially, the utilities, by state order about 12 years ago, were put out of the power generation business. They had to sell off all their power plants, they're out of the business. So now they're wires companies, delivery companies, and the state mandates how the utilities go out and buy their power for customers who, who haven't switched to a third-party supplier. So there's, there's state rules, there's a state oversight of when the utilities go out to bid, how they go out to bid, and how much they buy each year, et cetera. So that process goes through, and in the end, the state and the utilities are choosing, essentially, the power supplier for the customers, because they no longer, no longer provide it themselves. And in that regard, that's what customers have until they essentially opt out.
have until they essentially opt out. They have to, they choose a third-party supplier. So that's what they have. So this program really is on a municipal level as opposed to a state level, putting the customers together to go out to bid to try to get a better price, offer that price to customers, and then give customers a choice of whether they would choose not to accept it. So, I mean, really, that's how the utilities do their business. They do it on a, potentially on an opt-out basis, under state mandate, and that's what's, what the, the customers have until they do something else. So, I mean, I think really that's kind of the way I was, I was thinking about our conversation last week, maybe another way to explain it in terms of how utilities do it, how the state mandates it. So it really is the same model, just on a more local level. But I think with added protection, because you really, you are proactively notified of what the price is, what the savings are, what the term is, and then you mail the card. If you don't like it, you can send the card in, you're done. It's more than what the utility offers, so.
Well, if I may, I read a really interesting article today in the League of Municipality Magazine in regards to, in regards to exactly what the township's doing. And I wrote some points down and I like to read them. First of all, the program has been proven. Not only does the BPU and the state want this, it has been tried successfully and implemented by Plumstead Township, Ocean County, 8,400 people, where they save 14% on the average. Tom's River, Ocean, and the Montgomery and Somerset are also now starting the programs. I want to give you a quote of a local official who has done this in this month, New Jersey Municipality Magazine, just out, so it's the time that we act today. "Once we had completed our research, we could not come up with a single reason why the township should not create a government aggregation program. In Plumstead, this program directly saves homeowners approximately $165 a year. Across our township, we have 21,000 housing units using conservative figure of $150 annual household savings. That means a total savings a year of over $3 million. That's a lot of money. Not a question of proper role for government. State already tells homeowners who to use by franchising the utilities in our township where they can operate, pick in their power supplier, and regulate them at the BPU, just using home rule and changing who decides from the state to the township." Plumstead had 93% of its residents decline the opt-out opportunity, which means only 7% opted out. If a homeowner already using a third-party, they're not forced in. They can continue to use whomever they want. If a homeowner thinks they can do better on their own, great, they can do it. But we believe economies of scale with joint pricing will get greater savings, plus our control of bid protects residents against the fine print of the, most of the third-party suppliers, excuse me. All homeowners need to do if they want to opt out of, is take five minutes to fill out a form, go on a website or make a call. No follow-up required. Hired firm, Gable Associates handles all the rest. You, we can call them and save in any hassles. They tried opt-out and for several years and nobody used the program, so the law changed to opt-out and now it makes sense." And this is, you know, this, you should read the New Jersey Municipality Magazine this week. No savings, excuse me, Councilman. No savings, no deal. This is required by law and is in, and is, and it's in the Gable's proposal. Plus, no fee to pay Gable if there is no deal or not. No budget in pact on the township. Gable gets paid by the winner of the energy auction. No effect on billing the services. Still get a Jersey Central Power and Life bill. Still call Jersey Central Power and Life for all issues. The idea is not new. It has been vetted in other states where they have saved millions. Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Ohio, Illinois, among them. We are passing on the savings to the residents of $3 million a year. And if you don't want to be in it, you just simply opt out of it. It's that simple. No one's being forced to be in it. You don't want the savings or you do want the savings, it's strictly up to the individual. And that's what I think's important. They have an opportunity to opt out. You're not forcing nobody. You're not tying hands. It's not like I can go right now and say I want PSC and G in here. I can't do that. The Board of Public Utility decides that. So what's nice thing about this, if the residents don't want to be in it, they don't have to be in it.
And the only, the resolution is simply tonight to authorize the engagement of Gable under contract to be able to prepare the RFP and do the things necessary to determine whether and what the savings will be. You're not making a commitment to do anything tonight other than to go down the road of seeing whether or not this program will provide a savings of, as the mayor pointed out, $3 million. And that's not just a one-time savings, that is on an annualized basis for your residents at no cost to Parsippany Troy Hills.
Would you be providing the administration, I understand that the council wants to hear, but would you be providing the administration with the bids that come in?
Oh, oh, sure. Yeah, that, that's actually, the bid process itself is done pursuant to local public contract law. It is done, we develop the bid documents because they have to be very specific to energy market particulars, to the BPU rules on government aggregation. But the final bid documents, we develop them, we, we consult with council.
Yeah, but you don't, Mr. Nelson's question is, this form of government, the answer is no. He will not be providing it directly to you.
No, no, I said the administration.
He'll be providing it to the administration.
Exactly. That's what I said. No, I was very clear on that. And that's right. That's right.
You said council.
No, I said not the council.
Go to the administration and you get it.
Right, but I, I wasn't, I was saying- But absolutely, we're hand in hand and actually, in the end, the, the town advertises the bid opening would be here. We would write a report to the administration that would, and ultimately to the council that would advise council results and there would be a, you know, a final vote on the award of the contract. We don't do this in a vacuum by any means.
We were speaking about our website before. Perhaps this explanation should be on the website in case anybody has any questions about it when they read something in the news.
It should be, really be on the front and center of the homepage.
It's going to be on there. I mean, we're just discussing it tonight.
Well, I mean, what I actually, we actually developed a sort of sample of a frequently asked, asked questions, which is pretty long, which has, it answers, it answers all the questions we've been asked over the last year by you folks, by folks in other towns, by actually people that have attended public meetings on this. And that would be uploaded right on the website. I mean, that's something we've done with other towns is the FAQs are right on the website and they get updated as we get more questions.
If it's too long, they won't read it. You need, we need the birds eye view.
We have short versions, medium versions, a lot. We have everything possible.
And again, if someone's in the program already, they will not be changed or nothing will happen.
No, if they have their own supplier, they're not included from the get-go.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
All right, yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Okay, add on, Mr. DePiero.
I make a motion that we add on, our 2013, calling 062.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. DePiero?
A resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing the connection of 3,000 Route 10 West, Block 31, 501, Lot 3, Denville, New Jersey, to sewer system of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
Second.
I have to read the whereas's first.
No, we can just do by, there's copies out front.
Are there copies? Then I don't have to read it, okay.
There's copies in the front on the table if anybody wants to see it.
Motion by Mr. DePiero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Okay, we're going to be going into closed session for ongoing litigation. Entertain a motion to go into closed.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Nelson, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of public from a meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the Township Council, in the opinion such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss litigation, attorney-client privilege, whereas minutes will be kept. Once a matter involving confidentiality no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved, Township Council, Parsippany Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Good night, everyone, if you don't stay. Entertain a motion to go back into open session?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
I'll make the ultimate motion.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Lee. I can't say good night all.
Good night, John Boy.